What's the date? Welcome to the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Twelton City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Councillor Reyes to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You're right, Hannah, where you are.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Brooks has asked for a moment to announce a special acknowledgement from the council.
Thank you, Council President Pratt. I just wanted, before we moved on with the rest of our agenda, I know that myself, and we've talked about it, our whole council would like to acknowledge the work of the Twelton Police Department this last. It's been about over a little over a week now. As many people know, there was a routine call by the Washington County deputies and resulting in a shooting. Our police department supported the efforts of extraction and helped with the gentleman, with our sheriff deputy that was hit. I know that this story has gained a lot of attention even nationwide and that there's been a lot of support through the GoFundMe page for Sheriff Deputy. I know that the officer and radar, the police dog have been making a lot of appeals and they've raised the amount several times and the fundraising efforts for the Washington County Sheriff Deputy, but I wanted to really acknowledge our department because the three officers extracted him and probably helped save his life. He was hit seven times and they showed a lot of commitment and valor and we're just so proud of our department and the leadership of our chief. And I wanted to say that before we welcome aboard our new officers, but on behalf of the entire council, we just really want to acknowledge not only the tragedy and the trauma that our officers face on the daily, but the resiliency and the appreciation that our community feels towards our department. And if anyone has anything else to add. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And speaking of, I think Chief Pickering has a couple new officers to introduce.
Well, good evening, Council President Pratt and members of council. First off, thank you very much. We really appreciate the support from the council and from the city for the men and women of the Twelton Police Department. So I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce two of the newest members of the police department, Officer Taylor Grimmett and Officer CJ Hilgar. So Officer Grimmett, who was seated over, was born in California but grew up in West Lynn. We will claim him as a Twelton kid since he did graduate from Horizon High School. He, after high school, attended Northern Arizona University, where he earned a degree in criminal justice with a minor in sociology. He comes to us from the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office where he spent five years as a corrections deputy. And he is currently assigned to field training and will attend the Oregon Police Academy starting in November. Sitting next to my right is Officer Hilgartner. So CJ Hilgartner grew up in Tiger and graduated from Tiger High School. We won't hold that against him. After high school, Officer Hilgartner attended Washington State University where he graduated with a degree in HR management with a minor in criminal justice. During high school, he spent five years as a cadet with the Tiger Police Department, so he has a little bit of an understanding of the job and where we go from here. So Officer Hilgartner is also assigned to field training and he will start the Oregon Police Academy in October. So I just say thank you very much. And again, we would like to welcome Officer Grimmett and Officer Hilgartner to the Twelton Police Department. Thank you.
Congratulations. It sounds like you both have really great backgrounds to go into these roles and in honor of our mayor that's not here, I'd like to just ask you if you have anything to say.
Just want to say thank you guys for this opportunity to come meet everybody and show our faces around. Yeah, not much to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The next, I think Sherilyn's got another new employee in a position that we're so happy to have though.
Well, it is, I'm Sherilyn Lombo, City Manager here, and it is my pleasure to introduce our new City Attorney, Kevin McConnell. So Kevin came to us by way of Gresham, where he worked for five, a little five years and most recently is their City Attorney. He previously worked for the city of Medford and has been practicing municipal law for over twenty years. If you're, if you interact with Kevin at all, you'll quickly realize he has a southern draw. Kevin hails from Tennessee and he went to college at the University of Memphis and law school at the University of Oklahoma. Kevin is married to his wife Abby and they have three boys. I know you join me in giving a warm Twelton welcome to Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. It's nice to have you on board. More than we can say, I would. We're really glad to have you and just wondered if you had anything you'd like to share with us.
Well, thank you, Council President, member of the council. I just want to thank Sherilyn and the council for this opportunity. We've been in discussions for many, many months about making this transition and I can, from what I've seen, this is a very well-run city and that's doing large part to your excellent manager and the staff that you have and of course the policy that you set as a council. So I'm excited to work here and get going.
Thank you. And I would, I know I'm speaking for all of us, but I would agree with what you said about Sherilyn and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment? We don't think so tonight. Okay. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda tonight? For later discussion and consideration? Okay. We have, gosh, nine items tonight. So we'll start. Number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Number two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Luxar Nails and Spa. Three, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Tonica. Four, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Akira Sushi. Five, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Izumi Japanese Steakhouse. Six, consideration of resolution number five, seven, one, five, dash, twenty-three, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County, outlining the county's and city's obligations as they pertain to the county's planned ride connection shuttle stop improvements. Seven, consideration of resolution number five, seven, one, seven, dash, twenty-three, approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County concerning community development block grants. Number eight, consideration of resolution number five, seven, one, eight, dash, twenty-three, authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Tiger Twelton School District, Washington County and the City of Tiger related to youth library services. And number nine, consideration of resolution number five, seven, one, nine, dash, twenty-three, adopting the City of Twelton contingency and reserve policy. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Moving on. Okay. No challenge. So next is our public hearing, consideration of ordinance number fourteen, seventy-eight, dash, twenty-three, approving the building fee schedule. And I believe, now I lost my place, but I believe we have someone from staff coming up to speak.
Yes, Suzanne Tyler, our building official, will make a brief presentation.
Welcome Suzanne.
Good evening, Council, Council President Pratt and councillors. I'm here to follow up since our seven-ten meeting where I presented the council with information regarding a proposed building division fee schedule increase. We looked at the existing fee structure. Sorry. Let me advance here. There we go. We looked at the existing fee structure and I provided insight on the state of Oregon Building Codes Division guidance regarding reserve recommendations. I want to thank the council for their support. At this meeting, I will be presenting the updated fee schedule ordinance for public comment and approval as well as following up on a couple of questions council asked at the last meeting. At our last meeting, I discussed where Twelton's building division revenues come from and explained that most of the fees will be adjusted given that we have not increased our fees since two thousand and five. Some of the fees adjusted were adjusted based upon guidance from state and some fees are new. In the process of evaluating the fees and changes to our structure, we looked at the actual amount of staff time used versus the amount of time that we collected for. And I gave an example of a typical plumbing permit for the addition of a bathroom onto a single-family residence with a typical amount of staff time spent and we compared that to the the actual personnel cost, vehicle costs, administrative time that we were and that we looked at and we realized that we were not collecting a sufficient amount of money to compensate the city for this time. Even in the best case scenario, with no additional inspections due to failed inspections. Oh my goodness. Helps if I go in the right direction. At our last meeting, we also discussed Twelton's building fees in comparison with other local jurisdictions, comparably sized. Staff compared the building fees for sixteen Oregon jurisdictions in the tri-county area to evaluate Twelton's fees compared to other jurisdictions. In all cases, Twelton's building fees were either the lowest or nearly lowest of all the jurisdictions compared. And included here are comparisons of a new single-family residence and a new commercial structure and the typical fee comparison. So here is a new commercial fee project and the fees taken for a new single-family residence. In summary, Twelton's building division strives to provide exceptional customer service through responsible, effective communication with our customers and consistent administration of building codes. Our plan review times are commensurate with other building jurisdictions in the tri-county area. And we've looked at the fees for the associated permitting and the amount of time it takes our staff to do this work. And we are proposing changes to the fee schedules to more accurately reflect the amount of time spent by staff in performing these duties. There's been a lot of discussion over the years about reserves and contingencies amongst building departments, but we haven't really received any guidance from the state of Oregon as to what that recommended amount should be until now. And now we have that clear direction. And as a result of this guidance from the state, we feel it's appropriate and necessary to right-size our fee schedules to build our reserves and to account for the increased costs of running a building department. So we have given notice to the state as required by Oregon state law. And we have provided that information to the state so that we can get feedback from all of the state shareholders. In addition to that, we have notified the public through our website and asked for feedback from the public and comments and and now we are and now we are at the point where we are here to present this to the council for adoption. But before we do that, I want to make sure that I follow up from our July tenth meeting and respond to the questions that councillors had. There were two questions in particular that I wanted to respond to and one of them was the question of staffing. And regarding the need for additional staffing, we're currently taking a holistic view of the department and the needs of the department and ways that we can expedite our review times and what those improvements would look like. We're not quite there yet. We're still looking into how we can improve our efficiencies. But once we have completed that holistic view, we will come back to the council and discuss any changes in staffing needs and what that would look like at that time. And so that we can provide the service that our customers need and what the public deserves. Regarding the backlog in plan review, this is kind of a complicated question. And I wouldn't really characterize it as a backlog because anything in the system that's been submitted is in various stages of a review and inspection. So once a permit has been submitted, it goes into the queue and then it gets reviewed. And plans are either in the queue or they are in a cycle of revisions. And there's, there are a lot of factors that impact how quickly a permit moves through the system. Some are delayed because plan review fees haven't been paid. Some are delayed because of the complex nature of the design. And most frequently, many plans are delayed because they lack information that should have been initially provided. Very often, there's a need for revisions and that entails a lot of back and forth with plan reviewers and the architect or the designer and and so that sometimes takes a bit of time to get through that process to get to the point where we can issue a permit. Sometimes we end up working with designers and architects and engineers who are newly licensed in their field. And sometimes they need a little bit of handholding and that's to get to the point where we can issue these permits. This happens a little bit more often with subcontractors because sometimes they, they send their most inexperienced people in to submit for plan review and permitting without a lot of information. And so we kind of do a little bit of educating and, you know, again, handholding with people so that we can get these people to a point where we can issue their permits. So again, there's a lot involved in issuing permits. And many projects are so different. You, you can't always look at one project with the same lens. So I hope that answers your questions. I know Councillor Gonzalez specifically asked this question. I hope that answers it for you.
It does. I understand that there's a
We need to wait, sorry. Because it's a public hearing.
So this concludes my presentation and I'd like to ask if there are any questions.
First, I have to ask if there's anybody in the public that wants to make comments and it looks like we're good there. So now, Councillor Gonzalez.
So yes, it does. I understand that there is a process and that process just takes time. It is just part of it. I do have another question for you in reference to the permits and the increased fees and this list that shows for single families and commercial, who comes up with this list that says we need a permit? Is there a standard federal list or is that up to Twelton to adopt what we consider why we need a permit? In looking at this list here, there's a lot of items here that are just transactional. So who comes up with this list?
So the, the list of fees is created by a jurisdiction upon adopting a building code. So in the state of Oregon, the Oregon Structural Specialty Code and the Oregon Residential Specialty Code are the two codes that are adopted by the state. And there is a, there's a fee schedule that is a general fee schedule that has been, I think that has been incorporated into the OSSC and the ORSC, but the building divisions throughout the state have the authority to adopt fee schedules that suit the needs of the jurisdiction so that they can fund the building division activities.
But the types of permits, so the state sets that, right? We don't, we don't pick and choose which permits we, that, that list of permits, correct? That, that comes from the state building code.
That basically does come from the state building code because the building code outlines all the work that is required to be permitted with a building permit through a building jurisdiction. So that is correct. It comes from either the Oregon Structural Specialty Code or the Oregon Residential Specialty Code.
So here at the council, we would not be able to change what is required for a permit. So for example, every trade is licensed LCB, insured, extensive training, certified people to install these like an electrical outlet. So we would only, they can't even get a license to install and now it's a union. Why would we want the city to go into, why would, why do we have the city go in there behind a professional certified technician and say it's okay and have to pay this fee? Why, why is it that, that, that I would have to get a permit to have City of Twelton come out and say that this light switch was installed correctly when it's been installed by a certified technician with all the credentials, all the licenses and everything? Why would we want City of Twelton to charge a fee for that?
Two responses to that. The first thing is that we do not have an electrical program here in Twelton. All electrical permits are obtained through Washington County. So with regard to electrical work, that would be specifically permitted through Washington County. With regard to why we would require people to get permits because it is required by state law that jurisdictions either adopt a fee. They either adopt the building codes or they turn over their program to the state of Oregon to administer the building code program and then permitting would be done through the state of Oregon.
So, so we don't have a say. We, I can't, we cannot say here as council, I don't want homeowners to file a permit, example only, for an electrical outlet to be installed. We can't, we don't have a say in saying that that's, that's no longer required here in Twelton.
Yes, for the most part. There are a few provisions of the OSSC and the ORSC that building jurisdictions can adopt through local ordinance. For example, fences over a certain height or let's say swimming pools perhaps. These would be two examples of some things that could be adopted by local jurisdictions. There's a, there's a laundry list in both codes.
I've always wondered because when I look at these lists, as a, as an ex-contractor, it was always very difficult for me to, to pay these fees when, when it's certified all the credentials. Sometimes it feels like a money grab, okay? When, when it's not needed. It's tremendous training on these professional trades and then to have to file a permit for something so minute. Take staff time, take permit time, all these items where you can focus on other big items, but okay.
And, and I completely hear what you're saying, but I can also say that we're human beings and lots of human beings make mistakes and even when permits are submitted and designers submit plans or contractors go out in the field and they build things every day, we, we find things that sometimes are very serious, you know, safety deficiencies that, that I'm really glad that we're here to protect the public for, you know, and there are a lot of good contractors out there. There's a lot of good architects and engineers who really know what they're doing and they really try to serve the public and serve their clients well. But there are also people who are not at the top of their game or they're new to the industry and they make mistakes. And so that's why I feel like we provide a very valuable service to the community.
Thank you.
Councillor Reyes?
Thank you. Thank you very, I'm learning, just so you know, it was very, the questions and, and the answers interesting to me. So just get, just a quick question because you say you, we let the state know, then we let the public know. And then there's another process that I can't remember right now, but just because you probably mentioned this or it was somewhere and I didn't, I missed it. Do we pay the state any kind of fees or when we, from the people that we collect the fees from or is that something we pay whether people come and get permits from us or not?
We absolutely do. So the state requires us to collect twelve percent as a state surcharge that gets remitted to the state for their administrative support in the state of Oregon. And I think one to two percent of that twelve percent goes to support for training of statewide, like code education seminars that all certified individuals are required to take or updating, updating their certifications. So there's, there are, there's business related to making sure that the people who are doing plan review and inspection and administration of the building codes are properly trained and that they keep their certifications current and, and that they are aware of code changes and how to properly administer the code. And that's what some of that twelve percent goes to.
So from like the twelve percent, it's coming out of that fee that we're, because we're raising, you're asking to increase fees. So say it's, I'm just going to say a hundred dollars. So twelve percent of that, it's going to go to the state. It's not a fixed amount a year that we pay them.
It is based solely on the building permit fee. So the building permit fee is assessed and then an additional twelve percent on that building permit fee is also assessed and that is allocated directly to the state and we remit that money. I think quarterly to the state and that's based again solely off the building permit fee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I do have one more. So when it comes to single-family homes and remodels, a permit is filed for any kind of remodel that has to do structural, correct? And there's engineering designs have to be presented.
Sometimes, yes.
And when this project is completed, a Twelton inspector goes in there and certifies that it's done correctly, checks off on it. What impact does that have on the R and B value of that property? Is that, is, is that inspection to certify that this enhancement was into a home? So now it, it vibrates through values of the property? Is, do we as Twelton report that to the state tax assessor on property values and R and B values? Are those, do they talk to each other there?
Yes, we do actually. So when a new home is constructed in Twelton or anywhere in the state, the typically the counties require that the cities provide information regarding the valuation and information about the aspects of that home with the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms and, and the square footage. There's and, and we used to provide them hard copies of plans, but now they can access them electronically. So the county gets that information and the tax assessor's office actually uses that valuation to to assess taxes. And I'm not a tax assessor, so I know that as alterations and additions come in and we permit them, we still provide that information to Washington County or Clackamas County Tax Assessor's Office. And then they use their own methods to either increase that valuation that's used to collect taxes. I'm assuming that's the case. But I don't know exactly how that works, that part. I do know that we are required to give them this information and they do use that to establish a tax base for the homes that get built in this jurisdiction and throughout the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I just want to, actually that was a great learning for all of us, I believe. And I especially appreciate the importance of your role in making sure that we have safe.
Thank you. I'm very committed to the city.
Yes. So with that, we, we, if someone would like to entertain motion to have a first reading of this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to, for first reading of ordinance number one, four, seven, eight, dash, twenty-three, approving the building fee schedule. Second?
And then do I have to do a Hey, and then do I have to do a roll?
By title only.
Yes, thank you. Okay, um, um, I'm gonna ask for your vote, Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance number one four seven eight dash two-three and ordinance updating building inspection program fees for the city of Tuolton.
Alright.
Okay, I'll make a motion to.
Second.
Do a second reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven eight dash twenty-three.
Second.
Hey, um, I guess I'll go backwards this time, Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Thank you, and ordinance number one four seven eight dash two-three updating building inspection program fees for the city of Tuolton.
Counsel Brooks? Then I'll make a motion to approve, excuse me, ordinance number one four seven eight dash twenty-three.
Second.
Hey, Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
And I say aye. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. What was that? Hey, I, I'm happy to answer any questions anytime. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, now we have a um ordinance under general business. This is um ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty-three, change to the parking zone request from the residents on Southwest Blackfoot Drive and Osage Street. And I think we have Chief Pickering again.
Well, good evening again, uh Council President Pratt and members of council. So uh just a little bit of uh quick history. If you remember back on March thirteenth, uh two residents from the area of Southwest uh Blackfoot Drive and Southwest Osage Street in Tuolton uh came forward to request uh permit parking zone uh on their streets during school hours. Uh, on that meeting, um council directed staff to begin the process, which would uh entail the survey to the, to the residents of the neighborhood, uh which was conducted and those uh survey results were brought back to council on June twenty-sixth, uh at the June twenty-sixth meeting. And uh just to recap, um there were uh twenty-five uh surveys sent out to the neighborhoods, nineteen on Southwest Blackfoot Drive and six to Southwest Osage. There was fifteen uh responses that were received back. Uh, of those fifteen responses, uh they were all in favor of a permit parking zone for their neighborhood. Uh, so based upon the survey results and, and feedback from the residents, uh we've uh pushed forward consideration of ordinance number fourteen seventy-nine dash two-three, which would amend uh Tuolton Municipal Code eight dash one dash two-five-two to extend the hours of the permitted prohibited parking and, and would add additional streets. Um, the additions uh would be to add the word scheduled in front of school day when the description of the school time and to change the hours from eight AM to two PM to actually change the hours to eight AM to four PM, which actually encompasses the full day uh at the high school, which has been changed um by, by the district. Uh, and again, the uh addition of Southwest Blackfoot Drive and Southwest Osage Street to the school day zones of the ordinance.
Do we have any public comment, Nicole? Okay, so Counsel, any one want to comment? Oh, Counsel Sacco?
Um, I have a couple of comments. Um, so um as I go through this, I have a couple of questions. Um, my first question um is, is this really going to fix the problem? Um, and I, I read through the, the presentation that was given in June. Um, and some of the comments as far as what the issues are is um non-residents parking on public streets in front of homes, visibility issues, safety concerns, blocking driveways, litter, trash, et cetera. And my concern is that if they're not parking in front of these homes, they're gonna be parking in the homes just outside of this restricted area. And so are we just moving the problem from these homes to the homes along Martin Ozzy? Or there's another little, and I can't think of the, the name of the street off the top of my head. Um, there's another little um circle um area, street, um, again, I can't remember the name of it, but just down the street from there, um or just down Martin Ozzy, um, just a little ways um farther south of these streets. And so to me, I feel like we're not, again, fixing the issue, just moving it to a different location. Um, also, um, so I think that the real issue is maybe that there's not enough parking at the high school for them. Um, and also, why are these students parking in these residential areas? And I think one issue might, might be um the cost for getting a permit for parking at the high school. I believe it's fifty dollars. Um, so is this an equity issue as well? So are then we creating another issue for um maybe students that cannot um afford a parking permit? Um, that's why they might be using the street versus getting a, a parking permit. Um, so I think, so a question that I, that I propose um to, to my fellow counselors, you know, should we um, should we approve this? Or should we address the, the current issues at hand, which seem to be, um, you know, some of the littering, um, the blocking of fire hydrants, I think was on the list too, that are real concerns. Um, but again, I feel like the littering will just move to a different place where the students will park. Um, so really addressing the issues at hand, um, that are, or the, I guess the, maybe the laws that are being broken. Um, because I really just think we might move the problem down the street a little further. Um, and there could be other, I'm open to hear other opinions as well.
Counsel Brooks?
I appreciate the comments and the equity concerns. I um remember the first time I had one of these parking permit conversations and I think we had the principal of the school here and they talked all about the parking situation. There's a bigger conversation around districting. Why are kids driving, so many kids driving to school in the first place? Um, my thing with it and what I've learned over from my experience in those conversations that helps inform my thoughts around this is a lot of those um core problem areas are really part of the school board purview and not really things that we um have control over as a city council. Um, but we, what we can help with is permitting and we've done it in several other places. I know it might be moving the problem, but I also think there's a thing about um historical context where we've allowed it for some and I don't wanna have this group that had such a strong feeling around it be turned down after we've been um very acquiescing for other um community members, especially when they go to the trouble of canvassing all their neighbors and it's, it gets to the place where I think it's an issue. I really support the idea, it's just such a hornet's nest of looking at how the districting is, but it has to do with tax bases, so it gets complex, but I think they might be starting to talk about it. And then they, I know they added spaces. And then one of the other things is that it really happens when, like, this community came to the fore just later in the year when the new permits um are granted, when the new kids get their driver's licenses. And I don't know how that process for the school and permitting could be easier for those kids or if they could like leave a little bit for those kids or have a secondary permitting time. But I think again, that's a school issue and I hate to say it like that. I'm not trying to push the thing down the road, but it's really not, for me, something that I um feel is my, the core of the issue is not really, I think in the council purview, it's more in the school board purview, even though we have to work with people in the um permitting for parking. So we get, we have this little like loose ends to do for people. So that's how I think about it. I appreciate the thoughts and everything like that. Um, but I, just for, I'll probably vote how I historically did because I feel that there was a lot of effort made. Thanks.
Counsel Reyes?
Um, thank you for bringing up that. Um, I had no idea, because I don't have children in the school system, so I don't know what kind of uh struggles people go to, go through. So fifty dollars, it's a lot in my opinion. If our, a high school student that is trying to get to school on rainy days or they're coming from different parts of, not just Tuolton City, but also some of them are coming from like um, like outs, a little bit outside Tuolton. So I think that's, that's, whether it's, you know, it's a school system or not, I, I think fifty bucks is a lot. But um I also feel, here's what I think, um, it is a public street and everyone pays for it. So um, these kids, I'm not, um, I don't know if these kids are going there and park, but my only thing is that at one point, we did allow permit on the other side of the, of the school, which is Victoria Woods. And so I feel like weird to say, um, we allow one area, the other area, we are not gonna allow it. I don't know, it just feels, uh, it just feels weird to me that um it's gonna feel that one area is more preferable than the other area, um, in my opinion, because we didn't even think twice to say, yeah, they should, you know, we should have permits to, for that area. And um it is a whole school thing and it's all the students, the parts. I feel, I feel very conflicted knowing, knowing, knowing that one area will say yes and the other area is not because um if you really, I've driven in that area and it does not look like Victoria Woods. So I feel like, huh, why do we do that? Um, I don't wanna, I don't know, I, I wanna be fair to, to the, to the community, to those kids that are um looking for a place to park in and, um, I mean, I don't know how big the problem is because I don't drive in that area, so.
So I had a conversation with Principal DeLerba, actually today, um regarding the school and the improvements that they've made. So out of their last bond, they spent two and a half million dollars to re-stripe and restructure the parking lot, at both parking lots, to add more spaces to allow more people to park. They also had entered into partnerships with several of the churches along Graham's Ferry Road to offer additional parking to students who may not get a parking permit because they apply and they run out or they don't apply. Um, and again, I won't speak for Principal DeLerba, but his comments essentially where they're with, they have several kids who just ignore the permitting process or the parking rules and, and park where they want to or where they think they can. So, which I think, uh, again, causes part of the issue um with where do some of those kids who just are gonna go where they're gonna go?
Is, is there a possibility I can um, like, to, to, to do more research on my part? Um, or like to talk more in those, in that area to feel like I, uh, because I'm not, I'm not completely aware and I'm, I'm kinda hesitant to make a decision when I'm not completely a, uh, I don't know the area. I know I've driven there, I have a couple of friends, but I only go in, like in the evenings and I leave. But I'm not like a, I'm not there every day like these people are. So, and that's just mine. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with it yet.
Counsel Gonzalez?
I have a couple of questions and a comment. Um, the first question is, how many, how much more additional resources is it gonna take from, from your team?
Very little. So what we typically do in this situation, once the permit zone goes into effect, is there is a warning period, like anything else, when we make a change like this. Uh, we work very closely with the school resource officers. So again, complaints of this nature are complaint-based, so it would be someone from the neighborhood calling in a complaint. Typically would be our community service officer, Officer Frecher uh would go out and look at the vehicle, get the, the vehicle information and, and give that information to the school resource officers. We're gonna go to the kids and say, hey, you need to go move your car. Um, and the last, uh, the last zone that we did on Southwest Alabama, um, I ran the stats for the last five years and we've not issued one citation, um, and there's been compliance in the neighborhood.
Wow, that's, that's fantastic. And the other question I have is, um, could the homeowners in front of those, how many permits are issued to each home? Or is it per car, per resident? How does that work?
They have the ability to get as many, as many permits as they need. And again, this is only for on-street parking, so if they're able to park in their driveway or in their garage, they wouldn't be required to get a permit. So they can get permits. They can also, if they're going to have a party or have a, a function at their house, there is the ability for them to get temporary permits for excess cars that might be in their area.
In, in the future, we, we could potentially sunset this requirement, because it could be cyclical, it could be anecdotal. I mean, there's just many variables in place.
Sure.
But this is a, if we have the street in that community voting that they want this, I mean, this is a, they're telling us what they want. And I think this is an integral part of the council role is to vote for this and, and give support to them. Now, we can always revisit this in five years or put a clause in there that, that be done. And then maybe the problem just goes away, it could just be a bad year, post-COVID, I mean, all on, I mean, you could, on and on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Sacco?
Thank you. Um, so a couple, a couple of comments. One, um, I live in this neighborhood, so it's not a, it's not a post-COVID, it's always, the people have always parked here. Um, and I totally understand that the trash, uh, that the trash piece particularly, because as I walk my dogs, I walk right by there and you see, you see the trash. Again, I think that these are issues that aren't gonna go away, they'll just be, they'll just be moved. Um, part of the concern, I feel like with, with just approving, and I get the concern of we've, we've allowed this permit process in one area and so it feels inequitable for the other part of the community to say, you know, to vote no. However, then where do you draw the line? If it is then the next street out that asks for the permit, do we have to say yes? The next street out, do we have to say yes? Because we've set that precedent. Um, so I don't, I guess I, I don't feel really comfortable with that, that line of thinking, just because for myself, because I don't know where that will stop. And this particular street is not a through street, um, but Martin Ozzy is right there. And so then now are these cars going to be on Martin Ozzy? And there are some restrictions of parking on Martin Ozzy. Um, and so it might not be, come as much of an issue, but I know especially going um from where the school is um to my house, there's a curb there and people park on the street all the time there and it makes, it is a visibility issue. Will the cars in park there become a visibility and safety issue? Um, and so again, I feel like we're moving the problem or creating additional problems um in that neighborhood um because of just the nature of the streets in that neighborhood and, and the parking. Um, and so I, I guess maybe a, a suggestion is, could we find a solution for, and, and, and again, probably not our, our full responsibility, could we partner with the school district to find a solution like um churches, like we've, we've had before, uh, or the, the, the school has had before, before we enforce this? Um, could we um, or provide, uh, I guess maybe additional resources or, or something um before we enforce it? Because again, I think we're just gonna kick the can down the road. Um, and I had one more thought and it's escaping me right now. Um, oh, um, on the, the kids that possibly are young adults that um, you know, just park wherever regardless, I have, you know, I have some sympathy because these, these um are, might be the um, the kids that don't have parental support that they need to, to know how to get the permitting to um help them with that process. And so again, I go back to the, the equitable piece of, you know, who are we? Who, who's gonna be impacted the most by this? Thank you.
Counsel Reyes?
Um, thank you. Just a couple of comments and questions. Like I say, I, I feel very hesitant to make a decision today. Um, the churches that they partner with the school, do they charge fifty dollars too? Or is it less because they have to walk a little longer?
Yeah, I, I don't know the, the true answer to that question. I don't believe that they, they charge for permits to park. I know that they have an agreement with uh several of the churches along Graham's Ferry Road there um for kids to park there as an overflow.
Hmm.
Um, but again, based upon the information from the schools today, they said that most of the kids just don't use that. They would, they park in the neighborhoods instead. So that is available for them, they just choose not to use it.
So if we say allow this permit, that can So if we say allow this permit, that can be actually taken advantage of.
Correct.
It, if, if it's free, I'm, I'm assuming, but if it's, if they have to pay, it's the same thing. That the problem that, you know, financial hardship. So uh, yeah, I, I guess that was just my, I'm just wondering, like I say, I, I will have to do a little bit more conversations around that area.
Yeah, I, I will say, you know, we did the same similar um, perm, uh, survey back in two thousand and eighteen with the same streets. Um, which included Martin Aziz at the time and the, and the residents on Martin Aziz. Um, were not in favor of the permit parking, so we did not move forward with permitting on Martin Aziz. But we did, at that time, there was several improvements made and safety concerns that were made based upon the corner and those things. So that was taken into consideration back in two thousand and eighteen and Blackfoot and Osage back then. Those residents did vote for the permit, but because of that was a package deal, essentially, it was not, not approved back in two thousand and eighteen and so. Which has led Blackfoot and Osage residents to come back again on their own to try to uh, secure the permit parking for their, their two streets.
Counselor Brooks.
Um, I just wanna also address, um, I know there's concern about equity. Um, but there's, there's buses, right?
Yes.
There's, and they're free?
Yeah.
And they're provided by the school?
Correct.
Okay, so that to me, I mean, I didn't have a car when I was in high school and didn't have these issues to deal with. And it was a little bit better on the environment, I think. And I did get a ride with people here and there, but a lot of times I walked and took the bus, so um. I just think that there are other opportunities for kids, um, and I um. I, I just wanted to remind the council of the, that we have buses that are paid for by the, by the taxes. Thanks.
Counselor Sacco.
So one more, one more comment on that. Um, I think that. Um, there's a lot of kids that drive to school. I know mine was one of them, um, because they have after-school jobs. Or uh, sports commitments, not always through the school sports commitments or picking, um. You know, especially if parents are working, um, and can't pick up other children from school or taking, um, you know, kids. Their, their younger ch- so siblings to, to sports, um, and having to help support the family altogether. Um, that, that's a, that's a huge reason and help for um, to have another driver in, in the house. And um, I know buses can take a couple hours to get all the kids home and so um. I know that that's a resource out there, a free resource, um, but I think it also, um, then again, just it, it creates. A hardship when, you know, when another family member can drive and help out with those things, um, it does create a constraint. In those aspects.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Uh, I, I appreciate the concern um, for the families, um, and their finances, but it's really not our, our, our problem. Um, we had constituents in, on that street who are in full support of this. Um, there's so many different stories of people's life experiences, financial situations, work. It, it's, we really can't resolve all those problems, but we can resolve with the voters and the residents of that street say. They want permits. That is a clear indicator. Um, it can always change. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, so when you're saying you talked to the principal, um. From your conversation with them, does this extra parking at the churches, is it more than adequate for the number of kids that need parking spots?
I believe there's three churches uh, on that, on that stretch of Graham's Ferry Road, which I would think would be, would have enough parking. I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
So I didn't talk to Principal Delerba today, but I did talk to them earlier in the school year and. Or in last school year. And my understanding was that there are, there, with their adjustments and their improvements, there's enough. They believe there is enough parking available for permits for the, the drivers in their parking lot. And they've procured deals with the churches that are free to the students. That don't want to get, that, that don't want um, to buy the, the permit. But they do believe that they have enough onsite parking, but you do have to pay for it. I know in two thousand and nineteen, that school year, um. Uh, they did not have enough parking onsite and they were doing all that construction and. Um, and, and that's when they started doing the, the church, the church parking lots and. My kids both got, got parked there, but I, you know, it's not desirable. And there's closer streets. I also wanted to point out, um, if you want some advice or, or help. Unlike next steps, um, we have a city attorney now who can give us some options for how to move forward if you get stuck.
Okay, um. That, North Dakota and Osage, it's so close, it's just that little path, so it's a really nice, easy access and. If I'm hearing that there are parking, there's permit parking spots and then there's extra parking spots. Um, I'm not in, and I think there's a whole livability issue with that street. And I can imagine how crowded it must get with, it's just convenient, it's, there's. There are places for people to park and they're choosing not to park there, so I don't agree with that. I, I do have a concern about um, if people will choose to park on Martin Aziz, but I, I think that's an issue to deal with if it happens. So that's where I stand on it. Counselor.
Oh, she, she.
Oh, go ahead, Cheryl.
No, no, it was Bridgette.
Oh, Bridgette.
Oh, I was, I like. Oh, no, thank you uh, for that information, because then that changes a lot of um, knowing that they do have. An, an available s- uh, place to park, they just, you know, choo, or sometimes they're choosing the most convenient location. So I can see that now, so thank you.
I'll make a motion to, um. Oh, I'm, make a motion for first reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty-three.
So this is where I would jump in, I have a second, yes.
Um. Then we're gonna vote, so for, this is just for first reading, Counsel Gonzalez.
So that'll be yes.
Counsel Brooks.
I.
Counsel Sacco.
I.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
And I say yes.
I'll make a motion for a second. Oh, sorry, you have to read it.
I already said by title.
Ordinance number one four seven nine dash two-three, an ordinance related to parking, amending Tuolatin Municipal Code eight dash one dash two-five-two. To extend the hours of prohibited parking and to add additional streets.
Okay, I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty-three.
Yes. I second.
I.
Yes.
I.
I.
And I say I.
Ordinance number one four seven nine dash two-three, an ordinance relating to parking, amending Tuolatin Municipal Code eight dash one dash two-five-two. To extend the hours of prohibited parking and to add additional streets.
And um, I'll make a motion to consider passing the ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty-three.
I second that motion.
Counsel Sacco.
Um, I'm gonna vote no, um, and I'm gonna vote no, um, because I feel like we would just be creating additional issues for other residents. By voting yes.
I'm voting yes, because they do have um, additional parking where these uh, individ- students can park, so thank.
I vote yes.
I. And I vote I.
So this will come back on the next council meeting for third reading and adoption.
We had no items removed from the consent agenda, um, any council communications?
Okay, Counsel Brooks.
I just want to, I know everyone's been looking at the pictures in the news about um, Maui and thinking about. Um, all the people that um, have lost their lives and have been displaced and been affected. Um, by the historic fires there, so I just wanted to uh, acknowledge. And I'm sure my fellow counselors feel the same way about the tragedy. Thanks.
I think I gave updates out of, out of line last time, so thank you.
Um, I wanna thank everybody for the great civil discourse tonight, but um, I also had, I sent you today, sorry, it was the last minute, but. Um, I'd like to request that the council um, approve to have our city's logo on the joint values on the proposal. Regional congestion pricing and toll projects within the Portland metro region. This is a lot of work that um, you've heard about from. Mayor Bubinik and I, but it's just asking, I'm trying to read really quickly, like um, that um. ODOT rebuild trust by showing clear benefits to the communities, driver, listen to local voices, have a lot of inclusive community engagement. Um, that the transportation system works and that revenue sharing models are shared with local jurisdictions. Um, uh, and, and that they look at advanced adequate public transit infrastructure with the proposed tolling. Um, so any comments on that? I gotta up. Counsel Reyes? No com- okay. Okay. Sure. Oh, on a different topic, okay, so we're moving forward this, okay, Counsel Sacco.
Okay, we'll just, uh, so we will take that and talk to the county about adding.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel Sacco. Um, and thank you for that reminder. We, we received an email um, from um, a member of the. Library Advisory uh, Committee about um, the uh, recognizing banned book week. And I was wondering if there was um. Um, if people wanted to recognize with a pro- proclamation banned book week, October first. Uh, through the seventh, twenty twenty-three, um, and that was supported by the library um, Advisory Committee.
Counsel Gonzalez.
I, I do have questions around that, that email that was received. Um, I, I want more information. I think that I want to know more clearly, other books that are being banned. Uh, in looking at those titles of those books, they were very specific to one type and one banning. But I know for a fact, there's a lot of books that are being banned and I would also like to get a more comprehensive list of that, not just one specific vision. Um, so I'm not in support of that proclamation. I would like to get more information and uh, and then. I would like to, I would like to get an example of those books to see what's, why we wanna get banned. Um, and maybe they can provide those, maybe we could read a couple of those books or sentences, but I want more information.
Can I sit, we have time, can I suggest we bring this back to next council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, with that, um.
Well, quick question, so what do you, what, what do you, what do you mean by that?
That you bring it up at next council meeting and we, and so that gives Counsel Gonzalez a couple more weeks, but we're still within the timeframe.
Okay.
Of being able to.
So at next council meeting, I'd bring it up during communication again, and would that give you enough time to do the research that you'd like?
I think I was hoping that the committee can provide me with um, some other work they're doing. What other books are being banned? It's, it's within their purview to provide that list to us, not just seven books.
Sherilyn, how would we?
I mean, so did you happen to um, uh, send the questions? Have you asked the uh, Dana Paulson yet?
I, I haven't gotten to that, but simply, I only bring it up because Counsel, Counsel and Sacco brought it up, it's, I just, I took the opportunity to ask my, my.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, um, my understanding of that list of books is that's the top ten or list of. Banned books in the United States. Um, and uh, so, and the, the, the request would be to support. Um, like, uh, to support banned, banned, but like, support non-censorship. Um, but that list was the list of, in the United States of um, the books that were most banned in twenty twenty-two. But I'm happy to check with um, the Library Advisory Committee to see if they have more information. Or I, they were, I know they were passing that along from Washington County.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you for bringing it up, um, Counsel Sacco. I, um. The library staff doing that, I think that they're doing it and of, of course, as counsel, I wanna support our library staff in doing their job. And um, and helping people be able to read. Um, it's interesting to me that a lot of the banned books are books that we studied in school when I was growing up. Um, Judy Bloom hits the banned book list, so I'm just kind of um, very, very supportive of that. And I'm looking forward to um, to hearing the proclamation and thanking our library staff. Thank you so much for bringing it up.
Sherilyn, will um, Mayor Bubinik and Counsel Hillier be here at the next council meeting?
Yes, I believe all seven of you will be here at the next council meeting.
Okay, are you all right with putting it off and then we'll have all the vote of everybody?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, I think um, with that, if someone wants to call for jury.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
I.
I can do my favorite part?